Call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Counsel, we have nothing to report out of closed session, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 52 is the presentation by the Sacramento Chapter of the Grand Jury Association on how to become a member of the grand jury.
Good afternoon Supervisor Kennedy and members of the board. I'm Patricia Gaiman and I'm President of the Grand Jurors Association of Sacramento County. It's composed of former members of the grand jury. We have two major goals. One is to inform the citizenry about what the grand jury does. And the second one is to encourage interested people to apply to become members of the grand jury. And that's why we so appreciate the time on your agenda because we know you have a number of people who view the proceedings here. And they obviously haven't interested in government, so perhaps they would be also interested in applying for the grand jury. And this is a way for us to reach people who are potential grand jurors. One of the things, of course, that is confusing for a lot of people is what the grand jury does and how it relates to trial court jurors. And we know you get the summons to go to trial court and you have to decide whether somebody's guilty or innocent, or who gets money and doesn't. That's not, of course, what the grand jury does. The grand jury is serviced for a year. The service starts in July 1st and is concluded in June 30th of the following year. It meets as a part-time job. It's 12 to 15 hours to 25 to 30 hours a week. And it is in charge of looking at government operations for the governments within the county. That means the county. That means the seven cities within the county. That means the 14 school districts, including the Los Rios Community College District. That means the 84 special districts, 20 of which are yours, and the 12 joint powers agreements. So, the area that they can look at is very broad. So, in a word, the grand jury is the local government watchdog. A grand juror must be impartial, open-minded, closed-mouthed, because everything the grand jury does is confidential by law, patient, respectful of the opinions of others, and willing to work as a team. Legally, a grand juror must be 18 years old, a citizen of the United States for a year, and a county resident for a year. Must be able to communicate orally and in writing. There are 19 people on the grand jury and 11 alternates. There is pay associated with a grand jury, but nobody ever gets rich on it. It's $30 a meeting, not to exceed two meetings a day, even if meetings exceed two meetings a day. It's really basically a part-time job, as I said, and vacations are allowed. All work is done by committee. Important also to note is that there's mileage included, particularly important for the more outlying areas, and parking. The grand jury investigates and reports on the accounts, records, operations, functions of the governmental entities within the county. The grand jury tours the detention facilities within the county by law, and those include the two state prisons in Folsom, the county jail, and the Rio Casunas Correctional Center, and any juvenile facilities. The grand jury can tour any local government facility that it would like. The grand jury reviews complaints that it receives from the citizenry, and the citizens can make complaints either by letter to the grand jury, the address is on the website, or there is a form that the people can use to submit a complaint that will go to the grand jury and it will be considered. The grand jury issues a report at the end, June 30th every year. This is a copy of one of the reports. Copies of these are available on the website, and I would suggest that anybody who's going to apply should take a look at those. The applications are due January 26th, and application forms are available on the website. So, if people are interested in applying, they've got about two weeks to do that. There'll be an orientation meeting in February, at which time Judge Hom, Judge Russell Hom, who is the advisor judge, will go through the importance and the seriousness of being on the grand jury. And then, sitting grand jury members will talk to folks about what it's really like to be on the grand jury. In June, there's a drawing from the list that have been nominated by the judges, and they all gather in the judge's courtroom. And the names are put into a bingo cage, and their names are drawn out one at a time in random fashion until 19 jurors are selected, and 11 alternates. And at that time, the new grand jurors are sworn in, and they will take their office at July 1. So, that's just a brief rundown of what is involved with the grand jury and how one can get on the grand jury. And certainly appreciate your attention, and hopefully the attention of your viewers. And if I can answer any questions for you, I'd be happy to.
Well, since you have this vast television audience watching you, is there someplace that people can get ahold of you if they're interested in looking more into this? Is there a website?
The best thing for them to do is to go on the website, because the website has tons of information, more than I could give you here. And they can always call the grand jury office. Becky Castaneda is here. She's the coordinator for the grand jury, and she can, either if she can't answer the questions, she can direct to somebody. That would be the best alternative for more information.
Okay, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I just wanted you to know, in case you didn't, that I have an electronic newsletter, and I've been sending this out on my newsletter for about a month that you...
And I appreciate it, because I am in your district, and I know, and I get it, and I appreciate it. You've done that for a number of years, and I even appreciate the fact you do it more than once. So, it catches people up. And if any of you, I'm sorry I don't get all of your newsletters, but if that's anything you wanted to include, that's nice. That reaches people, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
No, good. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Okay, your next item is item 53. This is the Vineyard South Mining Use Permit Rezone/Reclamation Plan and Development Agreement. If there's testimony, we do need to take an oath. And I'll just go ahead and do that now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you get to the podium, please state your name for the record in this statement I have been sworn. Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and read this into the... This is a use permit to allow surface mining on eight parcels, and the use of a conveyor system to transport mined materials across adjacent parcels to an off-site processing plant, a rezone of the project site, and to add the surface mining combining zone, a reclamation plan to include open space and/or non-prime agriculture as the end-use of the mine, and a development agreement between the project applicant and the county of Sacramento. The project site is located at 9332 Elder Creek Road, west of Mayhew Road, east of Hedge Road, and on both sides of Elder Creek Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is a draft environmental impact report.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director, here to give the staff presentation, and I do have a PowerPoint. So, the location of this project is 9332 Elder Creek Road. It is west of Mayhew, east of Hedge, and it is on both the north and south sides of Elder Creek Road in the Vineyard Community. This slide shows an outline of the project site in the red border there. And the requested entitlements are a use permit to allow for surface mining on eight parcels totaling 169.6 acres, of which mining will excavate approximately 146 acres of the site. There's also a conveyor system to transport mined materials across adjacent parcels to an off-site processing plant. There is a need for a rezone of 2.6 acres to move a small piece of the property from ag rez into the light industrial zone, and adding the surface mining combining zone to 164.6 acres. There's a reclamation plan to address the closure of the mine, which will include the use of the space as open space or non-prime ag at the end of the use of the mine. And there's a development agreement via ordinance between the applicant and the county of Sacramento. The mine will be mined in phases. This graphic shows Phase 1A, starting on the upper right, Phase 1B, Phase 2A on the lower left, upper left, and 2B on the lower left. And that relates to the details of some of the conditions. We also have a graphic showing the undercrossing locations, and in this case, you need to adjust your mental north. North is on the left of the slide. So, the undercrossings are on the left of the slide, which is really on the north end of the project site where they will be constructed under Elder Creek Road. This slide shows the conveyor system, the vast majority of which is an existing conveyor system, going from the current Granite Mine, which is being closed out, which is in the green on the lower-left part of this aerial. And that conveyor goes all the way up to the north to the Granite Plant. And so, there will be a little new conveyor segment in the yellow dash lines that will hook down to the new mine, and then we'll use that existing conveyor system. So, the plan that Granite has is to use the conveyor. It does cross Tykert properties, and so they have an agreement with Tykert in order to access that property. And so, it is much less expensive for them to use the conveyor system, and that is their intent. The use permit does allow the use of trucks were that agreement to not happen, but that is not the intent of the project. Some of the key points here, the use permit has a 10-year expiration date. That can be found in Condition Number 4 of Attachment 2. The reclamation plan allows three years to complete reclamation to the open space and non-prime ag as an end-use. Mining excavation must remain at least 100 feet from the Elder Creek Channel. There is a development agreement with a cents per ton component, where a piece of, a small piece of the fees essentially are allowed to go to a nonprofit, and Granite has selected the Splash Program at Mather as their nonprofit. So, that is covered in the development agreement. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more at the end of my presentation. As I mentioned, there are two options for transporting aggregate. The one that is intended to be utilized is the conveyor system. But as I indicated, while the trucks are more expensive and not their desired outcome, the use permit does address that, along with a bunch of conditions having to do with road improvements that would have to be made if a truck option were used, and conditions of approval limiting PM peak hour trucks and other provisions in the conditions. I mentioned the two undercrossings, and the applicant has requested the option to perform nighttime hauling operations for a maximum of 170 nights per year in Condition 5, in the event that were to have to happen. Summary of impacts, there was a full EIR that was prepared for this, and that is in the record, and the board has that thorough environmental impact report. The IR has identified the following impacts as significant and unavoidable. Aesthetics, air quality associated with NOx emissions, nighttime off-site haul truck noise impacts. There were several impacts that were significant but were able to be reduced to less-than-significant level through the imposition of mitigation measures. Those are on public services, hydrology, transportation, biological impacts, cultural and hazardous materials. And the mitigation measures have been incorporated as conditions of approval. The Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council recommends approval on a five-to-zero vote. Staff recommends approval with conditions and findings, and the Planning Commission recommends approval on a four-to-zero vote. I do also want to mention that during the briefings, there were four topics that came up. The first had to do with how this project relates to HCP mitigation fees, and whether, because the mine will be reclaimed ultimately, can those impacts be considered temporary? We responded to that via email late yesterday, and that's loaded onto the public information site. And the answer is no. The HCP has a definition of what is temporary, and it doesn't meet that. There were three additional questions, and I actually have a couple of overheads, and I believe the board has those to address those. The first has to do with the location of one of the homes, and Granite has been working with a property owner on fencing, given the proximity of that home to the mine. So, we've worked with the applicant, with Granite, on a potential addition to Condition Number 19. I'm going to put that on the overhead now. So, that condition would have the operator working with that property owner to meet the noise mitigation with a wall or fence that meets the needs of that property owner. So, that's the addition to Condition Number 19. We've also, a third topic that came up had to do with notification to the county in the event that the trucks had to be used rather than the conveyor system. So, we are proposing the addition of Condition Number 83 that would trigger a notification to the county. And then, the final fourth topic had to do with, were there an evolution of the Splash Program to a successor entity? We are proposing to add a clause in Page 10 of the development agreement in this section to specify the nonprofit foundation known as Sacramento Splash and located in Mather, California, or a successor entity agreed upon by Granite and county. So, that would tie it to the Splash entity. They would have to be a specific successor to Splash.
Okay.
So, those were the topics that came up.
Are any questions?
Yes, Ms. Chair. Yeah, just, LeAnn, while you're up there, that question just came from a colleague. There is a permitted use currently on the Southern Injera Project, the Capital Valley Paintball, which, you know, hasn't come before this body. It came before the Planning Commission, I believe, or maybe the zoning administrator. What happens to that entitlement? Obviously, there's an agreement that's included in our packet with the Baines family. And in the event that there were a, because, again, I understand that there might be a proposal either to relocate, which would require permitting at a different location, or in the event that they suspended operations, mined it, and then wanted to reestablish it. We have a conditions in our use permits that say if you, you know, even though you're vested, but if you don't use them for a certain amount of time, then they go dark. So, has that been looked at as relates to that particular use?
So, the use permit provisions is typically, if you don't activate it within the first three years, it goes dark. But once you establish it and vest it, then it would be vested.
So, it would remain in effect, and if they wanted to reestablish, once it were mined, if that were agreeable to the parties?
Right. That could be an option.
And that wouldn't be problematic there?
Right.
Just the conditions would apply that were with the original use permit?
Right. If it moved around slightly, we might have to look at it and determine whether it was in substantial compliance with the original use permit. That would really be a determination that we would make at that time, based on what is proposed. So, it's hard to speculate about, you know, what the parameters of that might be.
But if they chose to look to relocate to another site, then they would require, Capital Valley Paintball would be to go through a process to then...
Right. Use permits are tied to the land. They are the use of the land. They are not like a business license where they're tied to an entity. So, it is tied to the physical geographic location where it exists. So, if they did pick up and move someplace that's not, you know, in the immediate vicinity where we could do a substantial compliance call, that would trigger a use permit, depending on the zoning of the property that they moved to.
Okay. The other, I just wanted to go back to, again, I appreciate the grant representatives keeping my office informed, but it related to the amended Condition Number 19 that you just put up a moment ago for the Leilich property. The, this would be a temporary barrier, acoustical barrier. So, once the mining were completed, then if there were a berm there, let's say it had, I don't know if it had vegetation on it or not, but that would then come out? Or what are the specificities that maybe, you know, the applicant can respond? But this just talks about during the course of the mining, which I trust is the permit time for the 10 years for the entire permit, because there will be activities, you know, moving in and around the site. It may not be mined in that location immediately, but... So, this is only a temporary, so any fence that would be, or barrier that would be erected would only be there for...
Yeah, because the site is returning to open space and agriculture, and there's no triggering fence or wall requirement between an agricultural or open space use. So, this condition is intended to be temporary. And now, if both parties really wanted to leave it there, you know, I don't know that we would force its removal.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be required.
It wouldn't be required, too. And this would be triggered when Phase 2 would be embarked upon? Is that correct?
Yes, it's when that, yes, Phase 2.
Okay. Just one other question then at this juncture is that with the other inholdings that are, you know, either touching and/or, in some cases, surrounded by the proposed mining activity, have we, staff had, I did read the environmental document, saw some of the comments, one related to, obviously, what we just spoke about a moment ago on the noise, and then also, I think there was a question maybe at the Planning Commission hearing regarding water, the depth of water, and any impacts that would be assessed in any environmental document. But was there any other correspondence with staff beyond what was included in the environmental document? To my knowledge, my office hasn't received any additional communication from folks. I just wanted to be clear.
Right.
I saw the CPAC recommendations and such, but...
To my knowledge, we have included all correspondence in the record to the board.
Okay, so nothing very recent. I guess I looked to Mark and Surrender. There's been, okay, because I haven't received any addition. And I know that, you know, obviously, the applicant has been working with, you know, identified issues as best they can, leading up to this hearing, so... All right, thanks. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, with the applicant, I'd like to come forward. Welcome, Ms. Lofgren.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Martha Lofgren, and I have been sworn. Here to represent Granite as their legal counsel. We have several members of the Granite team who are here. If you have any specific questions, first, I wanted to acknowledge that Mike Tatusco, the Regional Vice President and Area Manager for Granite, is present in the audience. We also have Pete Dwelly, the Senior Resource Development Manager, who's been actively involved in the project, is a licensed engineer and can answer questions. We have Yasha Saber from Compass Land Group, who has served as the project consultant and really the liaison with all of the technical consultants, and Alicia Waddell Parker, who is the Environmental Services Administrator with Granite. This mining permit has been given an incredible amount of intention and priority by the county, and we wanted to acknowledge and thank all of the county staff who are here for their assistance. The way this project timeline worked, we pretty much infringed on staff's Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years. And I think that went from all levels, from the county executive's office down, you know, all the way with the city clerk's assistants. So, we appreciate everybody's assistance in getting the project before you today. It's been important to bring this project forward, because Granite, as a mining operator of about 60 years in Sacramento County, is depleting its reserves at its current Vineyard project, and this will be an adjunct or an add-on to that to allow Granite to take advantage of an existing conveyor system, use the existing conveyor, transport the materials to their existing Bradshaw plant, and we think have the least amount of environmental impacts that a mining operation typically will have. It is a phased mining plan, and the phases are intended to avoid the most significant environmental areas early on in the project. That's why it was phased with the county's input and advice, the way it's shown in the environmental impact report. Supervisor Natoli, I'll respond to the questions, and certainly willing to answer anything in more detail. Yasha Saber will probably have to assist me with any technical questions, but I can give you a high-level response. First, I wanted to acknowledge that Granite is in agreement, and has authorized me to say that they're in agreement with the two new conditions of approval, and also the amendment to the development agreement. So, those revisions are fine. With respect to Condition Number 19, and the question about whether it would be temporary or permanent, the way the language reads is that the materials would, subdivision B, it says that the burial will consist of materials that meet the required noise mitigation and are agreed to by the property owner and operator. So, if materials are permanent, Granite will agree to permanent materials. We do have Mrs. Leilich's son-in-law is present today, and I was able to give him a copy of this condition before the meeting started, and so I think he has reviewed it, and hopefully it's acceptable. And we are meeting with the family tomorrow to talk about what type of fencing she would like to have, so we don't plan to wait until Phase 2 to figure it out. We plan to resolve it right away. With respect to the paintball facility, I agree with the information that Ms. Moffett gave to you. Also, wanted to let the board members know that Granite has a private agreement with the paintball operator, and they are going to undertake to help him with permitting a new paintball facility. So, I think he clearly understands that he has to go through a permanent process in order to move the paintball facility. And if a suitable location hasn't been found, Granite has a provision for compensating him for that. So, we think through the private agreement, that issue has most likely been acknowledged. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, which we don't need to go through in any detail. If Yasha needs to refer to any of those slides in response to questions, we're happy to do so. But with that, I will conclude my comments and offer to answer any questions or turn it over to my colleague.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just thank you, Martha, for your response. Let me just, a couple items then. So, you indicated that Ms. Leilich's son is in the audience today. And I know that in her comments to the environmental document, as we spoke about last week, she referenced, obviously, she's avid gardener, and the granddaughter is there often, and that concerns. And so, I think the work that's been done, since you even visited with me last, to have the agreement, to figure out something that's going to be, hopefully, you know, deal with noise and/or dust, because she mentioned prevailing winds, but also be something that might be aesthetic in the standpoint that...
Yes.
Would, you know, be something that certainly Granite and the neighboring property owner could, you know, be pleased with. So, I find that, you know, certainly satisfactory. And I guess if there's any other current concerns or comments, obviously, folks are present, they can weigh in before this hearing's over. I did want to note that on Condition 83, and I, maybe, and maybe Yasha was going to cover this, but that my suggestion regarding this, that we at least have some notice, because my understanding is the conveyor pathway has been secured, and that there's, you know, a high-level confidence that that will go forward with the conveyor and not have to use the truck option. But in the event that, for some reason, that didn't come to pass, I think that was the interest here. But you may want to just share, because I know, again, even since the Planning Commission hearing have, I think, done further work, you, Pete, and others, to, I think, secure the pathway for the conveyor.
So, there is a, I believe it's a license agreement between Granite and Tykert for the continued use of that conveyor, and that was entered into, I believe, about a year ago, probably just slightly over a year ago. It's in place. The two companies are cooperating very well in connection with the use of that conveyor system, and we have no reason to think that will change. It actually would be very expensive for Granite to haul by trucks, so that's not their intention. So, if there was a disruption in the opportunity to use the conveyor, Granite will be working very hard to kind of fix that, because there's actually no one- or two-day opportunity to use trucks. The minute Granite starts intending to use trucks, they have to do these road improvements. So, there's a strong incentive to continue to work, as they have been for years, with Tykert, to keep using the conveyor.
Okay, good. And thank you for that information. And then, as it relates to the cents-per-ton development agreement, then, the parties, I see Emily Butler here on behalf of Splash, but so all parties are in agreement that that would be sufficient for any potentially future situation where those dollars would be assigned?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's all I have, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we do have a speaker.
Thank you.
And let me remind anybody in the public, if you would like to speak on this item, fill out a request to speak and turn it in to the clerk. Emily Butler.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Emily Butler, and I am the Executive Director of Sacramento Splash. We do environmental science programs for local schoolchildren, and our outdoor classroom is the Mather Field Vernal Pools. So, I got that phone call last week that every executive director dreams about, which is, out of the blue, somebody would like to give you money to pursue your mission and programs. And so, I really just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank Granite for bringing us into the development agreement, Supervisor Natoli for suggesting that and helping to shepherd it, and also to the county of Sacramento for having the foresight to create the cents-per-ton program in order to create... create the cents-per-ton program in order to create consistent funding streams for good causes in the community. As you all know, we have been challenged to reinvent our business model with some changes to the funding streams, and this will provide scholarships for about 1,000 students a year to be able to continue in this program, so thank you so much.
Good, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, could I just, because I knew you'd ask, just for the, and I don't know who they are, the Leiliches, the family, so do those, I don't know who the folks are that are in the audience, does that condition seem to address the issue relative to noise and such, the interface between Granite and?
You'll have to, can you come in for the record?
If you...
Can you speak at the podium for the record?
Yeah, because I know you didn't sign up, I just, I'm curious, I wanted to be sure that we'd...
Your walk will take longer than what you have to say, but it's still important to get it on the record, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Hi, my name is Ben Maity. My mother-in-law, Anna Lawlich, lives at that property.
Okay.
If I could categorize in two main things, what you just asked about, about noise, dust, aesthetics, right? The other main thing that was in her letter that I helped her send was regarding the availability of groundwater and if the wells used for dust suppression source water would have any effect on her well, because her property is on well water only.
Okay, good, thanks. Mr. Chair, maybe somebody could, Leanne, I think that was included in the environmental document relative to the water, and if there's going to be any follow-up testing relative to depth or any issues there, obviously people looked at this, because I asked you about it yesterday, so...
Right. So the SEQA document did analyze effects, potential impacts to water. It concluded, you know, there's an existing mine to the north that is being closed out, and then this mine to the south. Those two mines are at about the same, approximately the same depth. There's not been water quality impacts from operations on that northern mine, and so the technical analysis for this mine also showed that there would not be a negative impact on water quality. It also concluded that there would not be a negative impact to nearby wells from the use of water for, to abate dust. Again, fairly similar in terms of the amount of water needed from the mine that's being closed out to the north, a slightly different location, obviously, but also that the water use to, for dust control would be substantially, substantially less than what would be needed to actually do agriculture on the site. So the SEQA document did look at those items.
Leanne, if I could, so do wells that are going to be utilized for either dust control or for other purposes as this, the site is mined, have those been identified? The particular, particular wells, are they going to, you know?
I'm not, I'm not sure if I know exactly where the wells are. I might have to have the...
Or are they going to drill a new well, I guess that's my question.
I actually don't know that technical answer. I could... The applicant representative could answer that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Yasha Saber. I've been sworn in. Mr. Natoli, to answer your questions, the intent is to use the existing wells that previously supplied domestic water to some of the residences in the north portion of the project for dust control. If we need to install a new well, if those wells don't produce to the levels that we expect they would, then we've requested the ability to install up to three new wells. The locations of those wells would be dependent on where the operations are going to occur in the short term, and then at the recommendation of a landscape architect that we had hired to help with the landscaping, which will be put along the perimeter of the north portions of the mine for irrigation purposes. So it'll be located as close as possible to that landscaping.
So you're going to use existing wells potentially, but also retain the option of doing three more wells somewhere on the overall mine site, is that?
That's correct, and those wells would likely be located along Elder Creek Road in the northern portions of the mine site, if they're needed.
Okay. And were there estimates done relative to any drawdown as a part of, to what Leanne said generally about difference between agricultural use versus what you might use for dust control or for other, you know, purposes for, you know, that go along with the mining of the material? Were there estimates? I don't know, I didn't necessarily pick that up in the environmental document.
We have an estimate of the water use associated with the project. It's approximately 15,000 gallons per day. In a maximum day scenario, when most of the stripping activity and some mining is happening at the same time, the water demand could be as much as 50,000 gallons, but that would be very infrequent. We compared that water demand with the average agricultural use in the area, which amounts to about four acres of crop irrigation, so it's fairly minor. It's consistent with the amount of water that Granite's been using for about 16 years of the neighboring vineyard mine to the north. In fact, that mine's footprint's significantly larger than this mine, so it's likely that the actual water consumption would be even less than that. There's plenty of groundwater available, and it's deeper than the mining depth, so we've had no issue with water supply in the past with any of the existing mining operation.
Okay. Just one other question, is there, are any of those wells either proposed and/or ones that we had used from existing onsite wells immediately adjacent to the Leiliches property on Elder Creek? It's just along Elder Creek, so I might say immediately adjacent, because if you're going to have a drawdown, I mean, that could be, depending upon which wells were feeding agricultural portions of the, of the site versus proximity, I guess, to the one referenced here, so, do you know?
The closest existing well is on the northern portion of the Southwest Pit Property, just on the south side of Elder Creek Road. There used to be a residence on that property, which is approximately 40-acre property. In the north portion there, there's existing well site that used to service the home that was there. That home's been demolished years ago. Then there are two wells on the north side of Elder Creek Road as well. If there were a new well installed for dust control purposes, most likely that well would probably be on the eastern portion of the project, because that's where the first phase of the mining operation would go.
Which then pulls quite a distance away from, you know, the adjacent neighboring property.
That's correct. It would be furthest away from the Leilich property.
Is that something that, by condition, that you would be, find acceptable, that, you know, just as you described, that that would, at least, that would be the plan to do that, recognizing that, you know, there might be some reason why it couldn't occur, but that seems to make sense to me, and then that's where the mining's going to occur? I think it would alleviate some of the concerns that maybe have been expressed here today or in writing previously.
I'll need to check with my client, see if they're okay with that. Yes.
Okay. Very good. That's all I have. Thanks, thanks, Yasha.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, motion?
Okay, Mr. Chair, then I know we have, I have a series of motions that go with this, as outlined by Leanne, and maybe we can capture that last notation, Leanne, via condition, or however it gets addressed. I saw they nodded heads, and Yasha said yes on the record.
Supervisor Natoli, can I just make a quick edit? The SEQA finding should be adopted prior to certification of the AR, so that order should be, number three should be one and then drop down.
So we're going to take that first one as part of the motion then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's move that first, and I would move the SEQA.
Okay, we have a motion, a second please, vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, and then we would have the items one, two, four, five, six, seven and eight, which include the Reclamation Plan Use Permit, the zoning entitlements, and all the various conditions that are attached to, those that have been referenced in the hearing, and I guess maybe asking you, because they're relative to the position of the well, is that something we should embody in the, by reference?
I'm sorry.
This, the last discussion we had here about the well, about on the...
What change did you want?
So I think the supervisor is asking for a new Condition 84, directing that any additional well be located on the eastern portion of the property.
Right, so that would be a new condition of the use permit.
Okay.
Second.
All right, a motion then?
Mr. Chair, before we vote, I just, I just wanted to express my thanks, as was mentioned by our Splash representative for Supervisor Natoli's intervention, to, I think, find a really appropriate way to help address the needs of a challenged nonprofit doing great work on our community and a project applicant. It's one of those kind of rare opportunities to celebrate success on two different fronts, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just echo your comments about project applicant, because up until just, you know, a few days ago, in reading to the agreement, I noted it, and it was a surprise, as Emily said, to Splash as well, so, very good, okay. And thanks to Granite and certainly our staff for all the good work, sadly you labor over the holidays, but I know it's important to our, our talent of our community, so...
All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
Okay, Item 54 is the McClellan Park Special Planning Area Amendment, a zoning ordinance amending the McClellan Park Special Planning Area for properties located in the McClellan Park area in the North Highlands community. The environmental determination is an addendum to prior final environmental impact report.
All right, good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, board members. Chris Bohulie with Planning and Environmental Review. I'll be providing staff presentation. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. So the item before the board for consideration, oops, that's not mine.
Give them time to get it together.
All right, I'll just launch right in. Okay. So the item before the board for consideration is an ordinance amending the McClellan Park Special Planning Area. The McClellan Business Park LLC initiated this effort to update the nearly 20-year-old document and address antiquated uses, obsolete development standards and recast the special planning area. The proposed ordinance contains a number of amendments aimed at providing flexibility to attract investment and tenants at McClellan Business Park while closely aligning the SPA as appropriate with planning's current processes and updated zoning code requirements. To that end, the proposed ordinance includes consolidation of land use sub-districts, introduction of base zoning districts, updates to development standards and various administrative process enhancements. The map that I will show in just a moment illustrates the consolidation of similar land use sub-districts for ease of administration.
I think the PowerPoint gods are telling us something, Chris.
Right? I think so.
I think you're giving this verbally.
Keep going, keep rolling.
Never let him see a sweat, Chris, keep going.
Oh, no, I got this. The amendment includes base zoning designations for each sub-district. The amendment will allow for specific uses in the SPA to be used in determinations, and when not expressly listed in the SPA, the base zoning designations will be used to determine permitted and conditionally permitted uses. In an effort to provide greater flexibility, amendments are proposed to the SPA's development standards. Key changes include aligning walls and fencing standards to the zoning code and clarifying when upgrades to new and existing parking lots are required. Finally, the amendment brings the SPA in line with current planning procedures and zoning code processes. The amendment requires design review instead of development plan review, provides direction for development standard deviations through special development permits, and includes an administrative process for projects in the historic district. The project was reviewed by the North Highlands CPAC, Design Review Advisory Committee and Planning Commission, all of, all of which recommend approval of the item. Staff is recommending the board recognize the environmental coordinator addendum and determine the final EIR for the SPA is still adequate and appropriate for the amendment, and approve the ordinance to amend the McClellan Park SPA subject to findings and amended standards listing, listed in the SPA document. That concludes my presentation. I'm able to answer any questions you may have, as well as the applicant and their representatives who are here.
Thank you. Supervisor Serta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have any speakers on this?
We do not.
Okay. So I'm certainly proud to move the item today, and let me just summarize the detailed report that Chris just gave. This set of actions today is going to permit both the county and McCollum Business Park to, I think, better achieve their respective missions, and I want to thank our planning staff, certainly McCollum Business Park, for their collective effort over several months to get us to this point, because I think this really spells out a brighter roadmap for us to achieve what we both want for that part of the county, so, happy to, happy to move it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Please vote.
Unanimous vote. We took care of Item 55 and 56, so now we're up to county executive comments.
Chair Kennedy, members of the board, I have two items I wanted to spotlight for you. Both of them are going to be on your agenda on January 29th. First item's at 10:00 a.m., it's an update on the Implementation of Waters Choice Act. What the board had requested, once we made that shift, is to come back after the election and give a status of what we learned and what kind of lessons, where we go forward with it, so that's going to be at 10:00 a.m. on January 29th. The second item is in the afternoon at 2:00 p.m., it's a report on illegal fireworks. If you recall back last summer, there was a lot of activity around fireworks, illegal, and the board had inquired, what options do we have in, if you will, curtailing the illegal fireworks? We've been working with Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District, who chairs the task force that looks at fireworks. They have representatives from the Sheriff's Department, all the different fire departments and the police departments, and they monitor that. Their work in earnest starts for July 4th, the next couple of months, so the intent on January 29th is to have a presentation given to you, so they can have feedback from the board on what kind of changes you would like to see on how they're administering illegal fireworks. So those are two items that we're bringing forward to you next two weeks from today.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Anything from the board? Mr. Natoli?
Okay. Just, this is on our communications, a couple of different points. We had three, and I mentioned this in the county executive briefing yesterday, three letters from communication providers, AT&amp;T, Sprint and T-Mobile, basically requesting significant refunds for property taxes paid in 2014, 15. Typically, we just see these communications, and then they off to the respective departments. I would ask, and obviously we would get some feedback, maybe the board could have some communication back as to kind of what transpired, you know, maybe this is normal appeals in the business world, but maybe there's something else more than meets the eye here, because typically we wouldn't see these kind of come through in this bunch.
Supervisor Natoli, I have spoken to Keith Floyd, who represents the Assessor in our office about these. It is not, not exactly routine, and there's been a statewide effort, I think, among the county councils to deal with these, and we can certainly provide information to the board as to these claims for refund. They are not routine.
Okay, and again, if there's things that we need to do from a policy level, I know you'll bring those to us, but I mean, if there's, you know, this goes back, but if there's other moves afoot that we should be aware of, either through the association or certainly through our CSAC representation, we need to do that, too, so...
We will do that. We'll look with the county council's office.
Okay. The other one is, very quickly, and I spoke with Mr. Bakari just before we came in the session, on Item 74, just wanted, this has been long on the works, is the contract for the bridge replacements, and I own road bridge, I own Michigan Bar Road. There is a business out there, the Sacramento Valley Shooting Club, used to be the Folsom Gun Club, been permitted to use out there for well over two decades, and the operator of that facility called in, and I don't know whether we made contact with them initially, but very concerned about for the road closure, which will be for a good part of the construction months of this, of this upcoming calendar year, that there might be some alternative plans for allowing folks to get to and from their facility, and I have not spoken with the gentleman, I just wanted to let you, give you a heads up now, because that just came in today, and other supervisors may be contacted as well, because their membership is pretty broad.
What's the name of the organization?
It's the Sacramento Valley Gun Club, or Shooting Facility.
I'll talk to Ram.
Yeah, they have a use permit, they've been permitted, they moved from Folsom many years ago out there, so I'll just, Ram was going to check on it, and I didn't want to get ahead of him, but I just wanted to know, because the contract award, we're going forward to do the project, so, we may need to work with the, that's about the only use besides farming and ranching that I can think of that might be affected out there, so, okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Supervisor Serta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make mention of the fact that today would have been the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King's 90th birthday, and as we all are well aware on this board, about this time of year, we all look forward to, as the rest of the community does, to participate in various activities celebrating the legacy of the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I also wanted to note that on Monday, January 21st, there will be the March for the Dream, which has become a great tradition here in our community. the Dream, which has become a great tradition here in our community. There, this is a march, a community march. There are two starting places for the, for the march. One begins and is staged at 8:00 at the Oak Park Community Center. It's noted as the extra mile start. I believe it, the staging begins at 8:00, and the march begins at 8:30. And then, of course, there's the official start that commences from Sacramento City College, and that is staged at 9:00, and marchers continue on towards the convention center at 9:30. And then there is a review stand located at the convention center, where I believe activities start at 11:15. So I know I'll be out there, perhaps as others are from this board, and certainly our colleagues from other elected boards and commissions from across the county and the region, and I look forward to seeing everyone out there on Monday.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
I have an adjournment for a very beloved community member, and his name is Charles Wilder Jr. Charles Wilder Jr. was born on April 2, 1940, in Reynolds, Georgia, to the late sharecropper Charlie Wilder Sr. and Mary Crawford Wilder. To this union, four children were born, Margaret, Charles, Arthur, and Daisy. Charles was known as Charlie growing up in Georgia, and later known as Dad, G-Paw, Wilder, Coach, Chuck, Big Chuck, and C-Dub. Charles attended Eureka High School in Butler, Georgia, and graduated in 1957. He enlisted in the United States Air Force on April 5, 1961. While stationed at Luke Air Force Base in Glendale, Arizona, Charles met the love of his life, Zipporia Jean Wilder, in October 1965. The two joined as a union on October 22, 1966, and enjoyed 52 years of marriage. Out of this union came four children, Sophia, Brent, Candace, and Anthony. Charles was stationed in Arizona, Michigan, Guam, North Dakota, and McClellan Air Force Base, Base in North Highlands, California, where he retired as a Master Sergeant after serving 23 years in the Air Force. He also continued his education while serving in the Air Force and instilled the value of higher education to his children. While in the Air Force, Charles played basketball and eventually began coaching the men's Air Force basketball teams. Following retirement, Charles continued working as a civil servant at McClellan Air Force Base for an additional 12 years. During the 80s, Charles coached baseball in the McClellan Little League, and in 1984 began coaching at Center High School. He coached basketball, football, and baseball at Center High School. Over the years, Charles coached AAU basketball, traveled to Amsterdam in Austria as a coach for people-to-people, and coached optimist basketball games at Center High School. He was also one of the founders of the Sacramento Youth Basketball League. Throughout the years of coaching, Charles always attended the sporting events of his children and was often the parent chauffeur. Charles rounded out his coaching career at Consumnis River College as the assistant coach for the men's basketball team for 19 years. He coached alongside hedge coat, head coach Jim Clark and James Giacomozi. Charles has coached and mentored many athletes in and around Sacramento and the North Highlands community since 1978, including his own sons. He became a member of the New Testament Baptist Church in the 90s, and later on became a deacon, serving on the administrative board. Charles helped found Valley Redemptive Church in Fair Oaks, California, and immersed himself in the Lord's work at Valley Redemptive Church as an administrator while serving as a co-chairman of the, and, while serving as co-chairman of the deacon board and training new deacons. He was also a chairman of the membership, home ministry, and visitation committees, and the coordinator for the brotherhood. Charles enjoyed serving in the ministry and community outreach. Charles enjoyed traveling with his wife every summer to family reunions in Georgia, Texas, Alabama, New Jersey, Southern California. While relaxing at home, Charles enjoyed watching his favorite television shows and NFL team Dallas Cowboys and NBA teams Sacramento Kings. Charles also loved to showcase his barbecue skills, which he used as a means to fellowship with his family and friends, and is known for his specialty barbecue ribs and spaghetti. Although Charles battled with illness, he continued to serve the Lord and Valley Redemptive Church while spending time with his family. In November 2018, he was diagnosed with lung cancer, but remained optimistic and pulled up, and put up a good fight until the Lord called him home to rest in heaven on January 6, 2019. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, and with that, we will adjourn in the name of Charles Wilder Jr.
Would it be okay to make a suggestion to consider the CPI?
Sure.